Greetings, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Christmas Book Committee meeting. Our guests.
I think we started.
We are filming tonight. Mike and Guinness, thank you for joining us. We always appreciate your effort to share everything with the community. I think we're going to start off with the superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a lot of controversy.
The District Council of the United States of America and two Republic 48 states, one nation, one tribe, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Superintendent's report.
Well, I just thought I'd start with something feel-good on the screen here. So this is something I saw on Westwood High School's Instagram. And we have visitors from Spain, 13 students and two teachers who are here for like about 10 days. Is that right? Yeah. So they're visiting with us. And here they got to experience carving pumpkins. Sean notes for the first and perhaps only time people ever do that. How long did it take you to work, yes?
Yeah, I think 10 days. And not all those days are spent in the building. So they're here in the building for two of those days. And other times, they're doing other kind of New England travel things. And they're being hosted by our.
Oh, mind that while we're talking, we should turn on the microphones. Ken just.
There I am. Okay, come on, great. All right. So superintendent's report, I just wanted to share with you. So these are our October 1 enrollment numbers. Just thought I put the chart up here. Not much has changed since September. I think the net change in the entire district, we are down one student as compared to this time last month. And in those elementary classes that we're always kind of keeping an eye on, again, very little movement. So I think we added one additional student to Martha Jones. And other than that, we haven't had any change. That's correct. So that looks quite good. MSBA project update. I want to tell you what has happened in the months since we met. So we have confirmed our meeting with the MSBA for October 29. So Heath and I will be there. Charlie, as school committee chair, Mia as the school building committee chair, will be there. And they also asked that town officials participate. So Mike Wall from Selectman and Mike Colette will be going with us. As you may recall, the purpose of this meeting really is to talk about enrollment projections. This is sort of our first conversation with them. And by the end of November, we have to have agreed upon enrollment projection. That would be the premise of the project. So we have, in the interim, been working with Nezdek to update some of the enrollment projections from the study that we had done three years ago. And those projections are in fact a little higher than what we saw three years ago. So I think it's good that we've done that. And we will see what the MSBA has come up with on the medium.
So Nezdek, the enrollment projections, three years ago also?
No.
Yes, that's in the name to their tomorrow.
Yeah. So that is coming up on the 29th. Also, I just want to follow up that last month, the school committee had asked me to get started on the RFP process for an OPM. So I have made some inquiries about that process. I've got some information. I have a sample RFPs that another district used when they were going out for their OPM through MSBA. So I think we're in good shape on that front. I have also drafted a letter to the community updating them just sort of in general on where we are in this process. You may recall that last year, probably back to December, when Carol was chair, we sent a letter co-signed by Carol and me to all residents. So I thought it might be a nice time just to update people on where we are. I have a draft ready to go, but I am looking for your input. I mean, I could send it out on the listserv to parents and then submit it to be published in the paper, right? Put it on our website. Or we could go all out and I could do another mailing to all residents. I feel like the substance of this letter isn't quite as urgent as last year, right? When we were really looking for people to kind of come out and do something right now. This is more, we want to let you know what's been going on. So if you have any thoughts on that.
Maybe if you just send it, let us give feedback.
Send it to the draft and we'll take a look.
People feel it's easier to mail it to everybody, put in a newspaper.
I would wait until we have a more urgent meeting. Because we're going to have some letters that have to be sent out, I think, to everyone. Everyone do as you suggested. Send it to the people on the listserv and see what kind of response. We get a lot of questions, but I don't.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. I mean, that's my thinking as well. I just wanted to reality test that.
Yeah, I mean, the listserv may make newspaper. I mean, I don't mean to give a letter to $5,000, but if newspaper wants to print something, fine.
Yeah. Okay. Great. And then just lastly, we have, you know, we have a dedicated page on our website about the elementary building project that we created a year ago. And I just want to make sure people know that we are updating it in real time as we go along here. So for instance, the presentation that I gave at last month's school committee meeting about the process is up here. You know, the membership on the school building committee from the summer. Things that we've submitted to MSBA is on the list.
So will you make preference to that in letters and notebooks?
Yeah.
And also the district system. I don't know that exists. I can be an idea the first time.
So that is where we are. Anything else on the building project we want to talk about?
It sounds, anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Great. I'm going to turn your over to Heath for a second for the Q1 financial report.
So including the impact is the Q1 financial report this year.
Of course, Mike is on. You're so sus.
Hi. So including the impact is the Q1 financial report this year. I highlighted a couple areas that you may have questions about. If you do have any questions about that. One of them was the fact that the percentage for salaries this year was particularly low, especially as compared to last year. And that was a result of how the teacher's pay falls. We actually ended up moving the teacher's pay into September this year. Because of the calendar and the way the calendar works, over the course of time, it creeps back into August and then we needed to adjust it. So moving forward, we're looking to possibly put a proposal on the table with the union. So that fixes that for the future, basically.
So some of these, and it's a lot of words wise. Some of the line items, the extended amount for the first quarter is pretty high.
Yep. Well, we spent the majority of our supply money during the summertime. Teachers come back, the supplies for the, is there anything specific?
Contracted services.
Contracted services, main income money for a lot of the year during the first quarter.
So that makes sense. Okay, got it. And then. The other expenses.
Yep.
Paula Lee's students except Martha Jones. They would spend. What did you do with Martha Jones? She was around December 955.
Did you spend all of it or none of it?
No, he didn't spend all of it.
She's so good.
Thank you, Joanna. No, we're in great shape for the first quarter as it relates to Starfoot data.
I think that probably is because in the summertime, a lot of purchases are made in preparation for the summer. So sometimes you've extended it even though we're only three months in.
And percentage-wise, the other category.
Any other questions?
And I just, sorry, back to the contracted services. Why is Hanlon so out of line with the other schools? They've spent almost 100%. Was there some big-ticket item or something?
No, not offensive line.
I should have mentioned Abby's not here tonight either. She's ill. And I have a feeling that Abby could probably answer that question because oftentimes the contracted services were related to special education services that were providing for a particular group of students or students. So she may be able to answer that. Yeah.
Any questions?
Okay. So we're about FY20 budget development. So in your packet, I shared tentative budget calendar. And it closely mirrors the calendar that we used last year. So some of these things pertain to school committee meetings and others just give you a sense of the process that's happening internally. Class center leaders and the district leadership team. But you'll see here that the plan is that at our next meeting in November, we would really have an initial discussion about the school committee's budget priorities so that we can take that into account as we're developing the proposed budget over the next couple of months. In the meantime, I will tell you that the, so the Budget Steering Committee is beginning to meet. So that's the committee that meets between the school department and the town side. So we meet monthly throughout the budget season just to kind of stay in touch with each other so that we hopefully all kind of hit our marks with no big surprises. So we're having the first Budget Steering Meeting tomorrow just to kind of talk about preliminary thinking and the budget picture for the year. We also met with the FinCom Education Subcommittee. So there's a new chair to that Subcommittee this year. And they had asked to meet with us early just to talk about how we'll interact this year. Tony, as the school committee liaison to FinCom, was part of that meeting. So we met with that group. And I had also been invited to FinCom. They were interested in the building project update. So I went to give that. And then they had some, they submitted some questions about budget as well. So Heath, Tony and I went to that meeting. In that meeting, some very preliminary thinking about budget came up. So, you know, just to put this on your radar in terms of our discussion next month. So we are in the last year of a teacher's contract this year. Tentatively, we're going to start bargaining in January. So that obviously is a, you know, significant driver in the budget. Class sizes, which we're always talking about. I think we're in very good shape at the elementary level. The middle school enrollment is declining right now, which may have some staffing implications. The high school is where we still have some concerns. So in the budget, last year, we added in science and math. Saw some impact there. But English and social studies are areas that we will need to address in next year's budget. Next year will also be year two of our two-year phase-out of the kindergarten tuition. So we'll be continuing to kind of backfill that offset. I think we'll be looking at expansion of some programming. So for instance, I'm very interested in talking about J-Term and how we can make that financially sustainable given that we had this very generous grant from the Foundation for Western Education to get the pilot going. We need to think about that and have writing budget now. The good news is, is that whereas in the current year's budget, we had some programmatic needs in special education. Remember, we split the Applied Behavioral Analysis Program into lower WADA and upper WADA. That was a big piece of the budget this year. We're not anticipating any new special education programs next year. We're not anticipating any major capital projects outside of the typical capital budget. And we may want to look at the model for curriculum leadership in the schools. So those are like thousand-foot view when some of the conversations we're having in central office. Things that kind of. So the, you know, the curriculum leadership model at the three levels, it's very different at elementary and high schools compared to the middle school. The elementary, we have dedicated coordinators in ELA, math and science. At the high school, obviously, we have department heads in every department. Where part of their FTE is to provide curriculum leadership instructional coaching. The department heads, high school actually have supervision evaluation responsibilities, not the elementary. In the middle school, for many years, we've had full-time teachers who received a small stipend to be the curriculum coordinator. And we started kind of chipping away at that in math a few years ago. And last year, added science. So this is somebody now who, as part of their, you know, FTE, has that responsibility. And right now, the person that we have in the math and science role for middle school, I'd say is somebody who we hired with a particular skill set in mind to do this kind of work. And, you know, so very preliminary discussions, but we're thinking that we may want to have a similar model for ELA and social studies to provide that kind of perspective.
So would eventually, hopefully, that person would help with the evaluation?
So we haven't gotten that far, but I mean, obviously, that would be significant if we're getting implications there, but.
So far, just that was the principle that Abby was saying, and so it's just.
Yeah, I mean, we've had curriculum coordinators who have done some good work, but they're teaching full-time and they don't have any sort of formal supervision responsibilities. And it's difficult to make programmatic changes without that kind of thing. So just something.
I just also ask if we can bring it up next time with committee members that have ideas or thoughts, bring it forward and, you know, sooner the better. So it's something I would, that would be valuable too. But hopefully, next meeting will get more into it.
Date. Oh, yeah. Every now and then, definitely.
Finalize that, consider Tuesday or Thursday of that first week of.
Oh, I think we're taking a vote or something.
Yeah, but we're not.
Was there a date to react?
I'll have John follow up with everybody. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he knows what the result is. I just don't know yet.
I think we're close.
Yeah. Is it a three-team vote?
Actually, it's a whole one vote.
I'm watching that just a second.
I wanted to ask Allison just to talk for a minute about something that we've done with the science vertical leadership team that was kind of neat recently.
So last Wednesday, we actually have the high school department head, Dr. Miller, and our middle school coordinator and our elementary science coordinator. And we did a vertical walk, we saw elementary, middle school and high school classrooms. I think in total, we went into something like 22 different science classrooms throughout the district. And the goal was really to get a feel for what's happening as we move from classroom to classroom, level to level, with the longer-term kind of goal of looking for places that we can get teachers to see each other at work. Particularly where there's curriculum that builds, that doesn't necessarily build consecutively. For example, there's some ontology that is part of the science curriculum in grade seven. And then it resurfaces in bio at the high school level. And it's back again in grade four. So if we can find ways to help teachers see these things taught kind of at different levels, with different levels of complexity, it helps with that, that sort of vertical alignment question that kind of keeps coming back to haunt us.
So do you proceed doing that and the other?
Absolutely, yes. We've talked about it explicitly in both English and math as well. And, you know, social studies is a little bit in limbo right now. We're kind of waiting to see. I'm looking at Chris because he's sort of interested in involved in this. The state came out with new standards. And districts all over the place are sort of trying to decide what to do about that. And we're in a mode where we're kind of watching to see what, you know, high-quality districts do and how they manage that issue of how the curriculum is going to flow. Because I think we want, we have some things that we like and some things that we think could be better than that, too. We also don't have any curriculum leadership model yet for elementary social studies. So we're a little bit hampered on in terms of our vertical team.
But I thought, I just wanted to sort of highlight this, you know, learning model that we did with science because I think it's a good example of how we're trying to work on one of our priorities, which has to do with coherent, connected curriculum, getting people, you know, to see each other across grade levels across schools.
It was great. And one thing we've kind of backed around, a lot of us, we can learn a lot of things looking at all the levels. The kind of hands-on nature of how we're tackling elementary science right now is great. And honestly, it's something that all the secondary folks should get a chance to see.
Sure, it was worth it.
Yes, it did.
Two other quick things. So we had our first come to central office for coffee and, you know, talk about whatever's on your mind on September 24th. And it was, I thought, fairly well attended, probably, I don't know, 20 people, maybe, something like that. And we had good conversation. It was really quite interesting. So we're going to do it again, maybe a few times.
Can you give an idea, was it parents from all levels? Was it people outside of schools?
It was parents.
A lot of new people from Westwood.
A lot of new people to Westwood. I had met probably four or five people who said that they had moved to Westwood either this year or within the last year. So that was nice to meet those folks. And, yeah, people from all levels.
If you do it again, would you again do a coffee?
Might do an evening thing. We talked about doing it maybe once a quarter, maybe alternate times. Yeah. Sounds great. And then also just on Fridays to science, Allison, Kate Doyle, our elementary science coordinator, Charlie and I went in to meet with some folks. Celtics, it's very exciting. And this is about, Charlie had read an interesting article in The Globe about how the Celtics have partnered with GE to create the Science Mobile. We keep calling it, they call it something else. But it's a giant trailer they have that has this really interesting people fabrication, making equipment in it that go into schools and do some really neat stuff with science. So we just went in and said, like, we'd like to talk to you about this. How did you make it happen? And talked about logistics and cost. And I tried to figure out how to get in on their program, but that doesn't look good. So it was an interesting conversation. And they have invited us to come out in January to see it in action in Malden. I think we said we're going to. And they're going to put us in touch with the foundation that they have been working with that was designed and influenced the curriculum.
So is Boston, sorry?
So it, so the Celtics have these corporate partnerships with an education mission. And they currently have five districts that they're working with. So Boston, Malden, Everett, Montmorel, and Lynn, I think.
The original idea was that we were talking about how if we had a van that could take scientific things around to the elementary schools, you know, rather than just storing them and not going, we could efficiently use a lot more equipment. So the original thought was, how do you set them up? How do you put the equipment in? How do you move it? So that was the original thought, what could we learn from them on how do you have a van with scientific equipment? And we moved it on to our five schools. Got a model that we could look at to get more equipment and make it available. So I think we're still looking at how that might be done with their advice because they're already doing something like that for the businesses.
Their model, the trailer is effectively in residence for two weeks at a given school. And then they do these very interesting projects where there is something that is created.
They're wearable technologies. So they look at, it's a design process and it's in the engineering strand. So people have to design different, and they have kind of a scale of different possible projects depending on how it sits in with the curriculum of the school. So they kind of work it out with school. Some of the projects take maybe two hours, some up to seven hours. So it depends on the population and how long they have to spend on it. Pretty cool stuff, though. Kids, kids are engaged periodically. They get one of the players to go out and learn a few things from the students. So it's great.
Just come a long way from the bookmobile.
Yes.
Millions of dollars, right?
No, no.
No, I got a number. They gave us 150,000 to 200,000 for the.
Equipment.
Equipment. Now, that does include some pretty intensive branding they have to do very carefully for the Celtics brand as well as GE. They had to kind of negotiate around that. I don't feel like we have that for Westwood Public Schools, but maybe I'm wrong. John might disagree. And also, they use a particular outfit that was out of Wisconsin, I think, to do this design. So, I mean, there might be some ways to sort of trim costs. The major cost for them actually is less about the initial capital investment as much as the staffing. So this is staffed by two full-time people.
Maybe we could do other districts.
Yeah, we can invite somebody to.
Partnership.
So we're, we're thinking, we're thinking. So thank you to Charlie for arranging that. That was really fantastic.
Charlie, good job.
Thanks to Bill Ricefelder also.
And finally, so I just wanted to mention, I know that the school calendar is on the agenda tonight as an action item. And, you know, last month, we had received a letter from the rabbis at Temple Beth David. It was the rabbi that's here tonight to help. And a resident spoke at public participation and had asked the school committee to consider making Rosh Hashanah into a school day on the school calendar. And you recall that last month, after some discussion, you decided to table the vote until this month and, you know, give people an opportunity in the intervening month to provide input to the school committee. And also, you had asked me to gather some information for you. So Carol and I did meet with Rabbi Micah last week to step further understand concerns of our western district community. And we received correspondence from several residents. Look, I think that everything that I received, you also received as well. And you had asked me to provide you with a, basically to research what other local communities are doing. So I took a look at the tech communities, the other schools in our collaborative. And I provided you with a chart that compares our calendar to the other districts' tech. And I think you can see for yourself that our calendar is out of step, I would say, with most of the other communities in tech. I think 10 out of the 13, if I recall, have both, actually have Rosh Hashanah Yom Kippur and Good Friday as no school days in the calendar. As I recall, it was Getum, Getum, Millicent, Waltham. So you have that information. And I just think that's what we need.
Would you like to just go ahead on that one item?
Yeah, I have both of the two calendars here.
So in the packet, John, he basically compared, he put this calendar that was in your packet last month, which does not include Rosh Hashanah. And then he prepared another draft of the calendar that does include, just so that you can see how the calendar falls.
I'd like to maybe just take, if we could, just move it up in the agenda and have discussion, take action on that if that's all right, if that's right. Okay, so what does anybody feel or how might we proceed?
I think just based on the communications we've gotten from the community, even though we have that policy in place about the miracle hearts and quizzes, it does seem like the students themselves aren't feeling the benefit of that policy. I don't think that's fair, right? I don't think that, I think that the fact that the students are saying, you know, we feel like we're missing something speaks a lot. And I think sometimes the policy isn't uniformly applying.
Right.
Unfortunately, and I know that, you know, the administration can't run around and say, the policy is adhered to.
Would you like to have a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Option two, which would include both holidays?
Yes.
Close in favor? Okay, so we will now have Rosh Hashanah and we'll kick off both of those at the school committee. We are now going to have our public participation, which we welcome you to come and offer your comments. If you could, keep it to two minutes, that'd be great. We're not doing a debate, we just want to have your input.
Charlie's got a baseball game to go to.
You don't want to miss it. I'm appreciating. And what we'd like you to do is just identify yourself, your street address, and we'd love to hear from you. So please raise your hand if you'd like to have something to say. Yes?
Rabbi Micah Citron, 131 School Street. Although it might be more of the time at 7 Clapport Tree Street where Temple Beth David is. Speaking on behalf of Rabbi Karen Tu and Temple Beth David, the community, just thank you, thank you for your deliberation, for your time. And considering what you just voted on, it means a tremendous amount to our community, to our families and to our students. I just want to acknowledge what just happened here in the room. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. And thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Osha Hirschberg, 40 Cutting Drive. I'm having a hard time hearing tonight, so I'm talking loud. It's easier to watch it on television to hear you all. I flew. I've lived in Westwood forty years and I think that the, having the hol- two holidays off is wonderful and not only for our children who happen to observe and are Jewish, but I think it's a step forward for diversity. And I think that we need to understand each other's religions, customs, you know, faith, color, everything. And the more we can do this, the better on all of the students in the schools are. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for, both of you, for your comments. We're ready now to move on. Allison, to the MCAS report.
I'm gonna sit up here so I can look at the screen. I think I'm on your computer. No, oh, sorry. Thanks. Everybody got a view of something? Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and kind of share with you a little bit about how, what we know so far about how things went for us this past year with the EMFAS. Tonight, I'm gonna kind of chunk things out into three bits. The first is just a little overview and background about the test itself. The second is to talk about comparative data and the third is to tell you a little bit about the next steps. I look back at the calendar, we did this meeting almost a month later last year. The results were very delayed because it was the first year of the test cycle and so it's exciting to be able to get an earlier jump on this this year so that our districts and school and pre-10s can really... First of all, just a reminder that we're talking about a couple different types of tests here. At the high school level, students took the legacy test. It's essentially the same format and same style of test that's been given since way back in nineteen ninety-seven, okay? It's a pencil and paper test and, and those sort of types of scoring standards haven't really changed that much. At the elementary and middle school levels, however, they gave the next generation test last year. It's an entirely computer-based test, it's aligned to new standards, has different tasks, different expectations, different scoring. The state made a big deal about saying this is kind of an apples-to-oranges situation. If you had an older sibling who went through the earlier system and scored one way and a younger sibling who scored another, not a fair comparison for the poorer sibling, right? So, in addition, the science test is a bit of a leading target. We had a hybrid year this last year where students in grades five and eight took this test based on the overlapping standards as the standard is sort of shifting from the old to the new, so the test getting aligned with the new standards. I'll write that down. Critical information about this next generation test, as I said, new test, higher expectations that can't really be compared to the test before. They used the two thousand seventeen results to establish a baseline. If you remember, there were not accountability ratings last year for grades three through eight, only for the high school level, and that's because we didn't have any kind of baseline against which to measure our performance this year. Also, last year and continuing this year, there are fewer students that are in that top category and that's just because these are new, more rigorous standards. All right. So I wanna talk a little bit about that new accountability system because it is brand-new. It's, it's very complicated. There are a lot of different parts to it and I don't wanna go into so much detail that hooks the eyes, blazes over, but I wanna give you a quick overview. First of all, just a note to say, the overall goal of any accountability system is instead of measuring us versus other towns, it's to measure us versus a kind of common goal and that goal is to get everybody, every single student, over kind of a proficiency bar, right? That's what we're trying to do. And what the state has done is it sets these targets that are intermediate targets, so we get to this point this year, this point this year, and if we keep on that track, ultimately we get everybody over. That's, that's the sort of whole idea. And it's a way of helping us continue, even though we're a relatively high-performing district, to try and, and work hard on behalf of our students. Also, the accountability system doesn't just look at our overall population, it breaks the population down into subgroups so that we can look at areas where some of our students are not doing as well as others, I think about targeting our interventions and really offering more support. So this was year one in this new system. The good news is, and there is, there is a bit of good news in here, Westwood did score in that, in the new top category among districts. It was one of just sixty-eight districts throughout the Commonwealth to get that meeting targets designation. And one thing about that sixty-eight, it's important to note that not many of those districts are actually K to twelve school districts, only twenty-four. The rest are either districts comprised of a single school or districts where they might have multiple schools but they don't actually span the entire grade levels. It might be like K to five or seven to twelve.
So there are a number of schools that are, I think, in town, right? It's, it's an elementary school and it's considered a sub-district and they're gonna build a regional school later, so, yeah.
That kind of thing. So when, when we think of kind of like, like districts, similar structures, similar models, we're, we're in a pretty small group of folks who made it through this year, okay? A couple new factors were added into the calculation that's made about determining our accountability percentage. Probably most significantly is this new subgroup. They took this new look at how we think about subgroups and they created what's called the lowest performing quartile. So they figured out who are the students in the bottom twenty-five percent of test scores from one year and then compare the next year to see how did that group of students fare. It's a way of ensuring in a district like Westwood where everybody's kind of doing pretty well, we're still keeping an eye on students who might not be doing as well as their peers, particularly those who are still below that kind of meeting expectations bar. In addition, the state's looking at other factors, like, and they're not weighted quite as heavily, but things like chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework, which includes things like AP classes, the international baccalaureate, which I don't think we do that here, some advanced math and computer science classes, as well as progress toward learning English for our English language learning students. So they look at their scores on what's called the MEA, which is the...
Access.
Access. Mea is the scale. The access, which sort of measures their progress toward English language proficiency.
So you need to say that when they calculate the scores, that they have to know all sorts of...
All of those things, yes.
Absentee?
Yes.
Yeah, the accountability system, I mean, it's a little opaque when you look at it. You would really have to be a statistician to understand some of these things, but yes, so they're, they're looking at all different characteristics and they're kind of weighted differently. You get a certain number of points for different things and they're looking to make sure that you're making progress. So the advanced coursework, you know, they're looking, ideally, we might have everybody taking advanced coursework, right? And they're sort of looking at the percentage of kids and are you making progress? Chronic absenteeism?
No, absenteeism. So I would say, the good news is we, we're there. I would say the, the thing that is a word of caution...
You...
Oh, there we go. Is that we're kind of right on that threshold. So the COTF score right now, at least for the system, is seventy-five to a hundred percent and our score is right at the seventy-five level as a district. So for us, that's kind of a heads up. We need to be mindful of the fact that we're, we're sort of right between these two categories. Now, you might ask, well, you know, what's the impact of moving from meeting to partially meeting targets? And the impact outside of the district is nothing, right? This is not triggering any, any sort of state action, we don't get a demerit anywhere, there's no funding implications. It's really internal, it's designed to communicate with us and with our wider community that we have some work to do on catching up on some things.
So I have to ask Allison, for transparency, for people who aren't here today, whether there's some schools that were in the partial means targets?
Yeah, I'm about to shoot that slide.
Okay.
So, one place where we, uh, two things to know about the, the district's level score is it used to be you got an accountability rating based on your lowest performing school. Now they actually aggregate and look at all the data together to do one district score, okay? Additionally, kind of one little piece of good news at the district level is we saw a blip in terms of some participation rates last year for the two thousand seventeen. Some of our specialized subgroup data was low. I think it was middle school science. That was way back up. So our participation rates across all subgroups, across all schools were very, very strong and that's helpful. So when parents ask questions about, you know, opting out of the test and things like that, it does have real significant implications for us in terms of these types of numbers. It's helpful to kind of message that out to folks. Okay. There we go. So I guessed about school and here it is. So at the school level, all of our elementary schools fell into that meeting targets range. They performed quite well across the board. Our middle school and high school were in the partially meeting targets. Some nice news from Martha Jones and Downey. We had two of them that actually received, two of our elementary schools received commendations. Martha Jones, we're exceeding the targets, they're actually going ahead of where the state has set it. And Downey came through as the triple threat. They actually got in on all three fronts, so high achievement, exceeding targets, and high growth, which means the student growth percentile. So something is going on with Downey and it's pretty awesome. One note about accountability that has to do with the structure of our district, and I'm gonna try to say this, I hope it doesn't come across as defensive, it's not meant that way at all. The very structure of our district has some implications for the way accountability happens here. We have five small elementary schools and as I mentioned before, when accountability is created, it's not just based on the overall population, it's all the subgroup, subgroups as well. Our, many of our subgroups don't show up as accountability factors for our elementary schools because they're dispersed. So for example, none of our elementary schools have economically disadvantaged children according to accountability. Even though they're there, there just aren't enough of them in any one place or grade level to make an impact. And that's true of a bunch of different groups. Economically disadvantaged students, English language learners and former English language learners, African-American, black students, Hispanic students, Asian students. None of them show up at all at the elementary level. Everybody goes to middle school and then all those groups start to show up in terms of accountability. So those are all additional factors that go in.
I just wanted to be clear that we have all, all kinds of students in all of our schools, right? But for the purpose of the accountability system, unless a subgroup has at least...
I think it's at least ten students.
Ten, and that would be in a particular grade, right? We'd be looking at like grade three, grade four, grade five. Yeah, then it doesn't factor into our...
So it doesn't factor into the rating at all. Some are there. So most of our elementary schools, students with disabilities is a subgroup that factors in. The high-needs subgroup is there. This low-performing students, that happens at every school, so that's, that's a factor. So it's not everything, it's not as extreme as that, but there are some subgroups that only sort of start to come into play at the middle school. And then interestingly, many of them drop out again at the high school level because at the high school, we only test one grade. So unless there are a certain percentage of students in the tenth grade at a given year, those subgroups may or may not show up. It just depends. And that's not by way of sort of any, any excuse around middle school, but I do, I do think it's important to know that the way it gets calculated looks a little different at each level in this district. I think it's just a delay. I mean, I feel like I'm high sun or something. All right. Important to know, coming soon, we have new tests at the high school. So this next generation test, it actually hits the high school this year for our sophomores. Last year, some of our students participated in some pilot testing, had some questions and this year, they will be the first group to take these tests. There is, coming down the road, the possible recalibration of cut scores, kind of the same way when this testing came in at the middle school and elementary school level, we saw things move around in terms of those top two categories. What the state has said is they're gonna hold both the class of two thousand twenty-one and the two thousand twenty-two harmless. So those two groups of students are gonna have very similarly scaled scores to the current test, but the state board reserves the right to recalibrate and make it, make the standards higher and make graduation a higher bar to get to. So that's something that's out there on the horizon, I will keep you posted. All right. In addition, coming this spring, we'll have fully revised science tests. So the science tests that, that happen in grades five and eight are gonna finally match up with the new standards. So we'll really, this spring, for the first time, have the clearest view of how things are going in terms of our shift to the new standards. High school's still under review. All right. It's what you all have been waiting for, our comp data. So I think it's important just to say, you know, why look at comp data? I think the accountability thing is, is important. We wanna try and get everybody over that proficiency bar, we wanna know how we're doing. It's also helpful to have a sense of how are we doing compared to other similar districts? Are we in the right ballpark at all? And we revised our comps this year. First of all, we asked the FinCom, like, are we up to date? And they said, no. So they gave us the new, these are a, a new set of towns that they've been using for the past couple of years, I guess. And the FinCom comps, from what I understand, are based on some financial indicators, things like tax assessment rates, bond ratings, things like that. So when you look at those towns, some of them probably feel pretty similar, some of them might be less similar to Westwood. I also wanted to introduce some other set of comp towns to look at to keep things in context as well. So the Department of Education publishes comp data for us to consider and that comp data is based on student factors, not on sort of financials. So they look at some things like your enrollment, the way your schools are organized, or the grade level configurations, and what they call special populations. So they're looking at things like percentages of special education students within the school district, for example, some things that might make your two groups comparable. And so this is kind of an interesting group. I don't know all that much about many of the towns, although I know, I know a guy who works in Dexter. All right. Next slide. Okay. So we're gonna work through kind of subject area by subject area and I, I'm gonna show you, this is, these are kind of comparative tables for grade five, grade eight, and grade ten. And I'm happy to run these on anything else, but these are sort of some nice benchmark years to take a look at. And I've got a couple of other things I wanna show you too about areas that were weird and wanna take a closer look at. First of all, great news, grade five, English, Westwood is just playing, killing it. Okay. Grade eight. Plus, good news, some real fall off this year in grade eight and that, that was notable for us because we have seen dips at the middle school before, but usually there's a little more of a rebound by grade eight. It's something our middle school folks are already aware of. Mike Redmond showed me his table today, he already has all the data and information compiled and they're starting to get, get teachers on board and taking a look to see what's going on. And then, grade ten, what you see is this convergence back up toward the top. Now, this slide makes us look like we're in the middle pack. I, I want a note for the record that I did not juke the stats by moving things around alphabetically out of order, which I could have done.
Which I would do.
Yeah. So I just, I kept trying to play it straight on that front, but we're actually one point away from the top. Everything starts to converge toward a hundred percent as you go elementary, middle, high school. And that's, that trend continues along all three content areas.
Can I ask you why you think it's a principle of a middle school? This has been, this is how it goes, year after the year. It's amazing. I mean, the middle schools, they always dip and then...
And then they get to the high school.
...grade and they're bad.
I don't, I don't have a good theory. My joke a couple, my, my joke last year about seventh grade was that I had been teaching English the year before and then when I left, everything, but that was obviously not true. I think the, I think there are a lot of things we need to look at. I mean, I think this schedule is definitely something people have voiced concern about. We have very short class blocks. I do think there, one of the things that's happened at the elementary school that's very powerful is they've invested a lot in really, really strong curriculum alignment and the middle school's a little more freewheeling and maybe, you know, we're running an English Language Arts Review this year, part of what we need to look at is, do we have enough consistency and backbone in terms of the practice from classroom to classroom in English to really make sure our kids can keep building on their skills from here to here? That's the critical question. I don't think this is like, you know, anything nefarious going on at the middle school. I think it's just, we need to do better.
It's in the age of the kids.
Ah, it's, you know, it's...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think you'll see, you will see some interesting data. There is like a statewide thing that happened in grade seven this year. The, the state actually talked about it in the press release and I'll show you, I'll show you a little bit about it.
We'll show you a graph that shows what happens, the trend line.
Like the seventh grade slump happened this year.
For a whole bunch of schools, which is interesting.
Not all of them, though, and that's what, what's kind of interesting. We'll wanna take a look at where it doesn't happen. All right. On the math front, also some nice, nice news at the elementary school. Alright, on the math front, also some nice, nice news at the elementary school level. And I do wanna go say out loud and very publicly, the difference between 76 and 80 is not so massive. Our kids are doing even strong work, they're kind of right in the mix, they're in a place where you want them to be. So those little variations along a couple of percentage points are not as concerning to me. Eighth grade, also a dip, it looks like a bigger dip. One of the things to be aware of though is the spread is narrower with the set of data. So the difference between Westwood and the top is only 13 percentage points, whereas in the English it was 20. That's a bigger gap, that's more concerning to me. That means there's something funky going on there. There's still room to grow, but I wouldn't get too alarmed about something unless there's a big gap. And again, high school, within one point at the top. Alright, grade five. I was a little regretful of adding in the Department of Ed comp counts because until I did, we were at the very top of this list. But I feel like I've gotta give a shout out to North Reading, I don't know what they're doing in science. Maybe they have a science video. But they are...
And that's like fifth or sixth in the state out of 300 districts, just to put that in context, from where we were?
Yes.
You know, with the curriculum.
I have to commend our teachers, our science leadership team, which is comprised of both teachers and specialists. Have done tremendous work on this front, it is really awesome. There's a new curriculum, it's working, great stuff happening.
I just want to say, we've been talking about the fact that we've really invested in science at the elementary level and presumably now kids are coming to the middle school with a different foundation than they used to, which I think will be interesting to see how that sort of rolls forward.
Absolutely, absolutely. This is the final year of alignment too, so we'll kind of have some sense of where things are. I know there's one unit left that hasn't been taught in grades up to before, so we'll see how it all shakes out. So some fallback again at the middle school level, not as far as before and, which is nice stuff. One thing I would say is that score is kind of comparable to where the middle school was last year too. Still, Miskinamit, I don't know where that is.
Can I ask you something about this town, I'm looking at it, you don't have Bell's, you don't have Wells, you don't have Lexington, and yet you have Weston. I mean, very strange.
Again, I mean, there are two things, two groups I looked at. One is groups recommended by FinCom, which have like similarities in terms of their finances, which is one way to think about, you know, how the school's resourced and things like that. And the other is similarities in terms of the actual population of students. We don't actually have a comparable population of students to Lexington at all right now.
No, to meet the line.
Yeah.
So why is he in Midland with us?
Yeah. Ian's on the FinCom list, but not on the Desi list.
So I did ask Pam about the FinCom list because I was surprised to see Weston on the FinCom compared to, I mean Weston. Weston, right? So I don't know that we have a comparable in terms of some measures to Weston. And she explained that it has to do with some of these other things, bond grading and whatnot. Yeah. Yeah.
The school committee was too.
Which is why we think that the DART comparison, that's the analysis that Desi does, where they really look at the demographics of your community, they look at the student populations, is probably a better comparison educationally at some level. But, you know, there are many communities that I would say to which we would like to compare ourselves and it's interesting to see, you know, what's happening there as well.
But it seems that all the, we move around, I mean, it's varying grades, but all of the towns are shifting around. You're gonna see one town that's showing, I mean, I don't think, flashback through the slides, you're not gonna be able to see one town that's just hitting it out of the park in the grades.
It is, it is interesting. I think what you would want to see and hope to see is a sort of, a relatively flat line that kind of moves consistently like this. That's what the ideal would be in any town. And there is a town I'm gonna show you toward the end where they got kind of closer to that, that is one of our comps that I think is worth a little visit to take a look. Alright, and then here we are back at the high school level. Again, kind of same trend as before, everything converges up toward... Alright, a couple statewide trends to be aware of. One is, I mentioned that slump in grade seven and eight, I'll show you a chart about that, which is kind of interesting. Another statewide trend, not a great one for this past year, achievement gaps. So in English and in, for most groups, in math actually grew last year across the state. The only exception was for black and African-American students in math. The state's stable, but didn't get any better. The overall good news is if you look back for 10, 11 years, I guess, since 2007, the gaps have closed over a longer period of time, but more recently we're seeing this white mean effect. So that's concerning. The other, I made up a word, girls out percentage. I feel like outperform sounded harsh. Maybe I shouldn't have backed up on that, I don't know. In achieving proficient or higher scores on all high school tests across the state, which is interesting.
Has it changed or...?
No, I think that's just a... So I mentioned this seventh grade, eighth grade kind of slump, and you can kind of see it in this graph. I started doing this, if you look, we are actually a kind of light pink color. Yeah, so you can see we kind of go up here and then drop down and then go back. Pretty big here, right? So I find this a little, you can kind of see that curve shape in a lot of the districts. I found this amount of data overwhelming, so I narrowed it down to a few. I'll give you my rationale for them here. So we've got Westwood. I like Medfield because they're nearby and we've been outscoring them lately, so I like to throw them up there.
Why do you want the Westwood to...
We're in green, we're in green. Wayland I picked because on that previous chart, they were the flattest. They were the one that had the least dip and I thought it was worth noticing that. Linfield was a comp, from a different set of comps, that across a lot of different tests and different measures, seemed to be very, very strong. So I wanted to see what this other random strong is doing. Then you've got the state down in orange. So we're in green. And I think the question is, you know, everybody's kind of doing this, but Wayland's kind of doing that. What are they doing in grade six, seven, okay, and in grade eight? It's mostly six, seven. Interesting question, they're right down the road, we know them. And they are a town, when I think about sort of similar communities, I intuitively think about Medfield and Wayland for the two that kind of feel similar to Westwood.
So we're not asking that question rhetorically, what are they doing? We're actually interested in finding out, you know, talking to some folks there that we know.
Can't everyone fail, right?
It's the, I mean, it's, the test has been around the longest. It's still the legacy MCAS, it's the old cut scores and it's the competency determination. And so, yeah, we've seen this for years and years, they're pretty convergent.
I like the statistic of the women doing better. A quote I heard five years ago from Warren Buffett, and he said about the American economy, and he said, "He said, 'Have great confidence in the future of the American economy' because half the geniuses in America have yet to come forward in business, the women." It was, there's the hope.
Alright, so a couple like steps. So we've kind of started this already, as I said, the school level people have started digging into their data. And the thing they really look at are individual student needs and intervention, what do we do about kids, right? At the department level, I know math has already done a lot of their item analysis, so they look at particular scores and why did we do pro in this question or that question? The district wide team, which meets not this Friday, but the next Friday, will really look at these big broad issues like major trends in the data and gaps and what do we do about that? And their questions that drive us, what can we learn from other districts as well as what can we learn from our successes right here in Westwood? And I wanted to, again, shout out to Downey. But also to a kind of hidden success, the high school this past year. Kind of kind of a celebration moment, when the scores came out, there was a group of students, students who had been on INPs through most of their careers, coming through the Westwood schools, who for the very first time, many of them passed the N-PASS assessment, which is a huge deal. It is a thing that awards you a high school diploma and it is a cause for celebration. There was a lot of kind of thinking and planning and support and effort that went into that. You know, a lot of hard work over a long stretch of years, but I really wanna commend the folks at the high school for their effort on that one.
Specifically, I mean, I think specifically in science and biology, that we really, they did some things in terms of the instructional model. Proved to be effective and it was a heavy lift, co-teaching between a special educator and a biology teacher and they were very, very excited to see the impact of that work.
Sounds good. And those, I mean, those don't show up on our scores. In fact, only when you look at accountability numbers, it almost, it's almost like that didn't happen, but we know it happened. So I feel like it's important to kind of honor those things that are good news, even if they don't, they don't show up in the numbers per se. I do wanna show you the type of thing that we'll look at, there's one more graph. This is, this is a gap graph. So this is the type of work that the district wide team will do. And what this does is it takes all those districts and you look at students with disabilities and students without disabilities and their performance. This is eighth grade science, true pick. So these are ranked ordered from left being the best to right being the worst in terms of the gap size, okay? So smallest gap is in Medfield and the largest gap, which you can see, is roughly the difference between those groups. And there we are kind of in the middle. The one thing about this data that I wanna point out is, for us, the towns we wanna think about and look at are the towns where we might look at the gap and closing the gap by means of raising the scores of our students with disabilities as opposed to lowering the scores of our students without, right? So I highlighted those there, that's Miskinamit, is it Nishoba and Sudbury, right? Those three that are circled. Those are, those are all towns where they had equal or higher scores for their students without disabilities, but a smaller gap as well. So those are places we would wanna look and see, you know, what are they doing in terms of their models for intervention and support.
I think this provides a good example that in that accountability system that we mentioned, you know, the question is, are we able to narrow what is, you know, an achievement gap between these two groups of students? And we look at that for many, many different groups. Are we able to make progress in narrowing that gap? And I think Allison's point is, we'd like to have rising tides, let all boats, right? I mean, Medfield is on the left because they have the smallest gap, but that's because they're, non-disabled students aren't scoring very high, right? So we wanna look at people who seem to have high achievement and are doing some good work in closing that gap.
That's an important piece to look at. And that's it, I had commented, I'm gonna leave my thank you slide at the end. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. And always, you know, I think, as happened last time, if you have specific data that you wanna see, I'm always happy to bring it forward and have you take a look.
I have a question. With scores aside, do you have access to, have you seen the results from the poll board? Which was like the school climate survey that was in Minnesota?
That has not come out yet.
Not for this year, next year.
Last year's data was excellent in Westwood, it was actually really exciting to see. And it is something that we're kind of waiting for. We have an SEL review committee and that's really good data for us to take a look at.
Does that be interesting to see from last year, this year?
Yes, absolutely. I can tell you that last year, we were very excited with that climate data. I'd be happy to share this with people who took a look, particularly at the high school. And we were comparatively very, very high in the state. That was fantastic to see, because that's really about students like lived experience when they come to school.
That's great. That's good. I mean, one thing to be mindful of is that some of the districts that are extremely high performing on these measures are hard places to be great. And we wanna be careful that we're not sort of trading off kind of our performance on tests for kind of well-being and kind of larger needs of our kids. We never, never, never want to do that.
Do you have any questions?
Anything else?
Well, I just like to, I mean, I just would, I've said it again, I didn't say it every October. So I'd build on what Giuseppe said, but I think addressing 850 High Street, I know we have a new principal. I'd love to actually hear maybe, I know we have this annual, you know, October, I'd love to maybe hear at some point, maybe after the budget or sometime, maybe what the plan is, particularly on middle school. Because I think we kind of hear about it, the scores, we talk about it and then, you know, I'd love to hear maybe, especially we have a new principal, what kind of what the agenda and plan is of the long term.
You know, I'm thinking we do have a, you know, a science and math coordinator now who thinks about this kind of stuff all the time, so she might be someone we could bring.
Last year, you know, I had a concern with the disabled student comparison. What I noticed was in math and English, they were fairly close. And in science, it was like a 30 percentage gap. And it's been reduced dramatically, you know, not that, so, but, so grade 10 difference between the advanced, in-advanced and proficient between everybody, what they say, it was like 13 percent from the first to like 20. That's, somebody did something and that's tremendous. And I wanna thank you for whatever was being done to kind of get at the disabled population in the science tech. The one thing this year that struck me when I went down and analyzed by the elementary schools, the differences in some of the things that I think, and as you noted, there's a lot of opportunity to learn from who's been more successful than the other. But it is like fifth grade science and the difference between the best elementary school, advanced and proficient, and the one that's least, it's like 23 percentage points. And then in the failure, it needs improvement, it's a 33 percentage point or so. So I think there's a lot to be learned within our own system on who's been successful and why and it varies by schools depending how you look at that. So I think that's an area that offers a lot of opportunity for learning. And I love what you're doing here as far as, you know, how have people been creative in some of these things? And having the data to go after them, and what are you doing to improve the disabled? I mean, you know, maybe something different. But I think we've really gone at it, I think the change already is very clear now. So that's a wonderful, you know, resulting change from looking at data, which can be kind of boring.
Could I just make my annual caveat about the elementary schools? Which is that, you know, we look at, I think it's great to learn, you know, what went well in different places. We look at that data over time and those things shift from year to year to year. And I think that's partly a result of the fact that our sample sizes are very small. So when we're looking at, you know, third grade, I mean, in some places we have singleton classes, right? So when you're looking at percentage points and you're only talking about 40 kids, it's highly volatile. So I just caution about.
Year to year at that middle and high school, it works better across the district. But, I mean, to your point, I think if we see those trends over time, you know, if we see one school, one classroom or one kind of content area where we're seeing a consistent lag. The principals are on this. One of the things the principals have the capacity to do is to even look at classroom data at the elementary level or the middle school, just to see comparatively, you know, how are things going? Is there one teacher who's really, really kind of knocking out of the park in one area? And how can we help that person into a position of leadership where they help other people?
Thank you for the analysis and also for the creative ways to follow up with it. Do something with it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. We're now going to move on. Action item, we've already taken action on the first item. Approval of the minutes of September 13th. We're gonna motion to approve the minutes. Second, second, all those in favor?
How could I make one change? I had to stop looking for my minutes here. There was one comment on the last, no, fourth page of the minutes regarding public participation. And it, there's a comment there that says the fourth grade classroom change this year is large at 23, with students in the Scar program being added. I think it's unclear from the way that it's written, it appears that that was my comment, but it actually was the residence assertion. And in fact, I do not think that it's very large class for grade four, so I just want to have to clear.
So can we make another motion? Do we have the motion?
Just, we'll make a, do the motion again with the amended suggestions.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 13th. What would be my decision?
So, those in favor? The next item is the cell tower lease. We've had discussions about that, we've had public participation about that. There has been discussions among the committee that we would like to possibly suggest to the selectmen that we do not want to renew the lease on the school building. Give them a heads up, we can discuss it further if people want to discuss it, but... But just to give them a notice that we would not want to have that lease renewed. That's kind of a consensus and we just wanted to maybe make it an action of, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Before that, was there any, I thought, boy, I know, did anyone look, was there anything else that anyone covered in the legal?
We did, so, so I wanted to follow up on that. So first of all, I just want to clarify that I don't believe this is the selectmen's decision. This is the school committee's project whether or not to renew the lease. You know, as a courtesy, we can let them know. But you had asked that the lease be reviewed and we sent it to Tom McCusker, who was town council. And his advice to us, his feedback was that based on his reading, we don't have grounds to break the lease. And that he strongly advised that we not consider that. He says we would be opening ourselves up to litigation, including perhaps being on the hook for damages and losses. He, yes, was quite clear about that, so.
I don't think you have to be a lawyer.
So I, I passed that information along because you had asked for that, but.
Well, I think we are saying we don't want to renew it.
Right.
And for the town, do work something up with them.
Right.
Or sell service for the town. So would I, I'd like to have a motion to, the motion would be that we would give a heads up, we do not want to renew that agreement with the telephone company. Second, favor. Okay, thank you. Thank you for discussing the legal implications of that. We have some field trips coming up. Trinity Repertory Company, which is to go out to Providence, I think. Do a little discussion of that.
What do they say? So this is a trip for all seventh grade students to take a trip to Rhode Island, to Providence, to see performance of the musical Little Shop of Horrors. And they would have like a talk back opportunity with the cast. It is kind of fit to the curtain.
Seven, I recall. We've been trying this for years.
One thing I, I like to ask Sean, Sean, when the kids do trips like this, do we ever ask them to like, write a brief description of what they learned, what they got out of it? That, you know, they could share with other kids, maybe wanting to take the trip.
This is actually the middle school, so Sean may know nothing about.
And Mike's new, so go for it, Mike.
And Mike may not know because he's new, but.
I just didn't know, but if anybody has any thoughts on just asking the kids who take the trips to just write something up and share it with everybody.
I don't know that they do that. I will say this, I'm confident that Gina Casamini and Jennifer Walsh, who are the drama teachers, follow up on the experience as part of the drama class. So I'm sure that there are opportunities to debrief the experience.
I've always found it might be interesting to, what did they learn and what they got out of it? I don't know if anybody else, does it make you interested in coming back from it? But anyway, we have a motion to approve the trip?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor? The next item is the field trip to Washington.
So you have the written proposal in the packet. And I don't believe that there is much change here from what's been happening the last couple of years on the field trip, same company.
Yeah, it's just more, it's not about the trip. The one that's about the trip, that, at least by experience, they did not gather feedback from parents last year. Maybe they do from students, I don't know. It just may be at some point, maybe not every year, it'd be interesting to gather feedback from parent. And this is the big trip, obviously, they do and get, you know, I don't.
And I, my concern always is whether, is there any time? Kids can't go because of the cost, are there any ways of assisting people who come forward?
There are ways of assisting, we can sure that.
So they, they know that, okay.
So feedback from parents, that's good, I guess.
I mean, the one that you always hear, why do some tops fly versus some dr- and I don't know what the right answer is, but.
We had that discussion, yeah.
And that's, yeah, that's.
But I try and remember, I, well, I think what we said was it was such a long trip to take by bus.
Yeah, I mean, expensive, right?
It's about, it's about like two hundred and fifty or three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, and that, that doesn't count, I think when, the last time they calculated, that didn't include transportation to and from the airport. So it was, you know, it's a substantial sort of bump up from the cost that's there, so that was.
Motion to approve this trip? Second. All those in favor? The Model UN trip, another trip?
So there's actually multiple trips here within the proposal of Model UN. As part of their activities, does several different trips to various competitions where the competition takes place over the course of the weekend and so they need to stay overnight. So those are all outlined.
Done that before?
We have done that before.
Any questions? Motion to approve this trip?
So.
Second. All those in favor? The superintendent's goals, approval of the superintendent's goals.
So I included the goals in your packet. And I have had some conversation with individuals about the goals. I'll just say that in general, so this, the goals are part of the evaluation system that's required for superintendents in Massachusetts. And so the requirement for superintendents is that I have a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and then two district improvement goals. The goal setting process, just to be clear, is, is one piece of the evaluation system. The other piece being that giant, right? Yes. So this is one piece of it. And so when I was thinking about the goals, you know, there are any number of things that I might have put here. Obviously, I wanted to create some synergy between the goals that I'm working on and the district strategy. So the two district improvement goals are really largely drawn from those goals. The professional practice goal that I put here really is a continuation from last year where I very much appreciated that the school committee has supported my participation in the new superintendent induction program. I found that to be a tremendously valuable experience. It's a three-year program, continuing year two. And that experience has really provided a lot of support for doing some of this big picture strategy work. So that's what I selected for professional practice goal. The student learning goal, you know, I want to be clear that issues like MCAS and what we are talking about tonight is very much part of the work of the district and will always be something that we're thinking about. I chose just to highlight here this idea of expanding and investing in programs and practices that provide authentic student-centered learning. Because it's kind of a new thing that we have called attention to in the district strategy. So that feels like a priority at the moment for me. And specifically thinking about J-term, which is something that I've personally been very involved in. So I don't want you to think that I'm letting the other piece go, but this is something that I'm interested in continuing to think about this year. And I think there's some value implications for it. Obviously, the district improvement goals, this idea of collaborating with residents and, excuse me, town officials around the building projects seems critical. And then. And then continuing the work from last year. I'm asking if you have any questions. You can read it. I'll, I'll be over here drinking water. Sorry about that. Okay, continuing to implement programs and practices that support the needs of increasingly diverse. Thank you very much. So if you have any questions, always prepared.
Any questions generally?
So when we're talking about diversity, it looks like most of this is talking about race.
The dis- the district goal is not. I want to be clear, so in the district goal, we're talking about, we're talking about race, we're talking about supporting LGBTQ students, we were talking about the needs of students with disabilities, right? So it's a much broader goal. I have sort of highlighted some things that I think will really be focuses from me personally. So for instance, expanding efforts to recruit, hire and support a diverse staff. And that's something that feels very directly connected to the central office work for this year. This issue about working on culturally proficient teaching is something that we're very much thinking about in the central office. And the parent workshop about talking to kids about race is something that I'm personally involved in organizing. So I sort of, we're, we're shining a light on those things for me.
Could I jump in? I know about you and your folks, but just to kind of say, one of, but I'm gonna interrupt. The, you know, one of the things that was kind of lying around emails today among the elementary principals was we're working together as a district to organize sort of parents speaker events throughout the year. And they really touched on a wide array of things. We've already had a number of speakers related to bringing kids with disabilities. We've just kind of confirmed a speaker who's done some nice work around LGBTQ support for kids. And then Carol Blist, through the three-part series for parents on talking with kids about race that we think is going to be a nice follow-up from, for some, from some of the cultural proficiency we're doing within the school, so.
And is that sort of the, the three crumbs that are, is that carried over to the middle school? Because from what I just can tell, just from the middle school, it seems like there may be a little bit of lack of information, which is in the LGBTQ area. I don't know if there's anything formal there.
They actually did three of the kind of targeted professional development days last year were at the middle school and really around supporting LGBTQ kids, so.
And that was with that group, right?
Desi Safe Schools. Oh, well, Desi Safe Schools did the first. And then we had two sessions actually with the National Safe Schools trainer, who's actually a local resident in Westwood.
Yeah. Do you have any, any, yes, yes.
In terms, in terms of, so interestingly, so the kid, on the kids front, I think we've essentially kind of want to make sure we're letting the kids drive the bus on that one a little bit. So last year, for example, we launched for the first time a student leadership program run through the anti-defamation league, where peer trainers from some of the eighth grade go into younger kids' classrooms and talk about, you know, anti-bias, kind of, we run anti-bias activities and help kids become aware. That same group lobbying in ran, I'm trying to remember what they call it.
Acceptance Day?
An Acceptance Day, at the, kind of toward the end of the year last year, went off beautifully. Some of those great, so.
I think my only concern is that, you know, this is clearly a topic in the readership. I mean, they have a referendum, you know, member on it. And I feel like if we're not discussing what, and there's so many different terms and there's so many different, and if we're not discussing that with the kids, I think there might be, and that, because they're discussing it, right? So there could be a lot of misinformation out there, there could be a lot of confusion, particularly at that age where they're starting to explore this area even without these complications. I'm all for letting students drive the bus, I just want to make sure that they're not driving it off the road. So maybe we can give some thought to that. And not just about LGBTQ, I mean, about all of these, these sort of, these issues. Because I feel like the middle school is, you know, it's, it's a tough, is a tough place to be.
It's a column of revolt or something.
There's a lot of information that flies around very quickly and.
I do think, you know, the middle school in some ways, I mean, or on this issue, the parallel between all of these different efforts is that we're, so for example, some of the work in cultural proficiency this year is really equipping our staff to be able to have kind of thoughtful conversations. And we had, we kind of had to do that work last year first with staff, before we even approached that.
That's one other question, it's not, you can give us some thought, you know, this is kind of a question out of the blue. But if you think about your goals or any district goal, I'd be interested in knowing what's going to be the hardest goal? What's the biggest stretch goal, the hardest goal? And you can give us some thought, I'm just throwing that out there. Because I think there's a part of thing that, you know, look, you're going to nail the J-term goal, I'm not, just to use that example. I, I think you're going to nail that?
It did not feel that way less straight.
Okay. But I think this, this, I think you're going to nail this shit. But it'd be interesting to think about what's something as a goal, just to fill out, that's really hard.
Stretch.
Yeah, it's a stretch, I don't know.
Well, you know, I really appreciate you saying that because I will mention that just today, we had a district-wide evaluators meeting to talk about goals and goal setting and what that process is. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about is if goals are about growth, you know, then you sort of need to be in a learning zone to make that happen as opposed to a performance zone. You know, I will be honest, having an evaluation process that happens in public on TV isn't like a recipe for that kind of environment. And it's helpful for me to hear that feedback, that people are open to that. It's certainly what we tell teachers and administrators here, that we want people to stretch. And if you don't end up exactly hitting the target, then that's still, okay. Yeah, so I think that's really important and I'm happy to uphold that. So that would be great. And, and I will give that some thought because I, I will say that even some of the work that we've been doing around cultural proficiency, it, that felt new and different in a lot of ways for this district. And I'm really good at it, but that has felt like.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or some questions? Thank you all for your thoughts. We have a.
You have to.
We vote for.
You have to approve.
Motion to approve the superintendent's goals.
Goals, second. All those in favor? Any new business, liaison reports or any other, I mean, have to take up time on the research game issues?
Well, we have one resplendent, right? But I'm not going to avoid.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
No, 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 it was a wonderful meeting, Charlie, and everything is terrific. And we need, next time, I'll give you a wonderful.
Any other concerns or thoughts? Can I have a motion to adjourn to the next round? Thank you.
Great, thanks.